Meeting from Monday, March 7th, 2016 to order. As usual, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll point out a couple of things this evening. Janelle Brown is not here, she's under the weather. Hopefully she will get better soon. Angelo Lamonti is right here in front of me remotely participating. You can't see him, but he can see me. And we're trying to use the microphone here so that we can make it the best we can. But remote participation, there is a policy we have to allow that. And while he's on vacation, Angelo wanted to be able to participate in the meetings. Everyone remind me, we're going to do every vote that we take as a roll call vote so we can make sure we have, you know, Angelo's input and whatnot. So I will ask for each person's vote when it's appropriate. Okay, so with that, we'll get going on weekly briefing. Anybody have weekly briefing? Carolyn, how are you?
I am excellent.
Excellent.
I am so excited to tell you all, the weight room opened on Friday evening and we are fully functional and operational. And I would like to personally thank the facilities maintenance department, Sean and John and the custodians at the community center who did well and above the job of their own work to get it up and operational. And certainly all the people that were inconvenienced, we really do appreciate it. But we are open and happy to have everyone back.
Okay, so everything is finished over there now, the repairs?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, alright, just checking. Thank you.
Everything that I know of.
And we appreciate the effort you made to get, you know, people when they had to reschedule and change things. And, you know, I know you had a little bit of aggravation probably with some folks that weren't happy they couldn't use different facilities. And I think by and large, people understand. And I just want to thank you for managing that process.
Thank you. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to public comments and announcements. Valerie Bell is here, Cape Light Compact.
Hello.
How are you?
I've been to several meetings, everything is going along fine. The Cape Light Compact just finished up a three-year program. They work on a three-year cycle, and so now they're starting their next three-year cycle. And there'll be some changes, not big changes, but some changes. One of the things that they need to do is they need to help the towns get a better grip on their energy usage. A lot of the low-hanging fruit has been addressed. You know, we've changed light bulbs, we have LED streetlights, we've done a lot of the really obvious things. And from here on out, it's going to be harder and harder to find those projects that can benefit from the energy efficiency money. To that end, they are piloting a program where they're going to be helping towns to get on board with something called Mass Energy Insight. I don't know if you've familiar with that, but it is the tool that Cape Light Compact is going to be using to evaluate new projects. So towns are going to have to have a much better grip on their energy usage and be able to prove that whatever project they propose is actually going to result in an energy savings. And so they are coming to talk to us at our next Harwich Energy meeting. That's going to be on March 17th. We'd like to see, you know, a couple of selectmen there, maybe some department heads, just to, you know, hear what that project is going to be. It's a free program. It does require input of data. Some of the towns that have already done it say that your initial setup, like getting everything in it, can be somewhat daunting. But I think that a couple of people from the Energy Committee have already said they would volunteer their time to help do that. And I think we could probably find other people that would volunteer to do that.
What's the date and time of that meeting?
It's March 17th.
St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, yeah. Where you're green, we're going green.
Whatever. What time?
And it, we start at seven, and we usually meet downstairs in the room next to the office.
Library.
Library, there you go.
You may want to see if this room's available, just because if you had to make a presentation or if they had to make a presentation.
Right, right.
It might be better to do it up here.
Yeah. And I don't, you know, I don't know how many people would show up. Anybody's welcome, but, so, that's basically all I have to say.
Okay, any questions on the board? Angelo, were you able to hear any of that?
All of it.
You heard all of it?
Yeah, it was fine.
Oh, good, okay. Do you have any questions?
Nope, none.
Alright, good. Alright, thank you Valerie. Anybody else on our public comments and announcements? Those saying here that I will take all votes by roll call tonight, just to remind myself, so. Lincoln, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Great.
Link Hooper, DPW Director. I do want to echo the sentiments, the Cape Light Compact did for the entire Cape, along with Siemens, its contractor, replaced all the public streetlights last year. That went like clockwork. Saved us probably about 60% on our utility bills for our streetlights. They did an amazing job, and believe it or not, I had one complaint out of the entire town that I had to adjust, and it was simply like put a shade on a light. It was, they did amazing, and they do a lot of good work.
And I know that when they came to us, you know, with the concept of doing it, I think we did an experiment out here, you know, Bank Street and whatnot. Initially, there's some concerns maybe about the quality or level of lighting and whatnot. I think it's been fine, quite frankly.
It has. I didn't, when we did that test pilot, that pilot project, it was like up in the center here and then down Bank Street, I didn't hear a word. Not a thing. And I thought no feedback means people aren't really noticing the difference. They are a little brighter in some places, but we save both on our ongoing maintenance contract for them and directly from the utility usage.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Linda, would you read the consent agenda for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda, approve minutes February 16th, 2016, regular session, and approve application for Alzheimer's Remembry Walk David Burtwell Memorial Walk to be held on Saturday, May 7th, 2016.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda discussion. Angelo, do you have any input there?
No input.
Okay. So hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Linda?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
Chairman is aye, so it's unanimous vote, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to public hearings and presentations. First is a public hearing regarding an application for a liquor license. Now, we did this a few weeks ago, and it came back, it's back to us tonight because apparently the abutter notifications were not done properly. So Linda, would you read the notice of the public hearing, please?
Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Harwich Board of Selectmen, Application for Liquor License. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended, that application has been made to this board for a season, common victualer, seasonal, common victular, all alcoholic beverages licensed for MT Group LLC DBA Mad Minnow Bar and Kitchen. Michael Strangefeld, Manager, on the following described premises located at 554 Route 28, Harwich Port. Single-story, multi-use building, backside, first floor to be licensed, two rooms, kitchen and dining room, including bar area, two bathrooms, two entrances, three exits, 2,137 square feet, outdoor patio 1,920 square feet, basement for storage, 300 square feet, total square feet, 4,357 square feet. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing upon the application on Monday, March 7th, 2016, no earlier than 6:30 PM, in the Don B. Griffin Room at Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, at which time all interested parties will be heard.
Thank you. So we'll open the public hearing. Are there any abutters here who weren't here last time? Just, no, I know you were here last time, sir. I recognize you in a minute. Any abutters who weren't here last time? Okay, did the applicants have anything they want to add to what was presented last time? Okay, sir, do you want to speak again? Please.
Thank you very much. My name's Ralph Schwartz, I'm the manager, my company manages the Harwich Port Resort Club, which is at 558 Main Street. Excuse me. And I just wanted to make a comment that the last license that was granted by the board was granted, I believe, on June 17th, 2013, stipulated that outdoors food service, beverage service, and entertainment would cease at 10 o'clock in the evening. And we're simply asking that those same stipulations be granted in that license for this licensee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Any comments on the board at the moment? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. Okay, is there a motion on the application?
I guess my question, I do have one question.
Go ahead.
As far as the stipulation on the last, from the last board on the license, the 10 o'clock, has that been addressed by the applicant? Are they requesting to stay open later for the outdoor?
Typically what happens is that when the, I assume they're going to have an application for entertainment license, and at that time, and quite frankly, we had, I think the staff downstairs researched this, the other establishments around there, the time limit is enforced through the entertainment application or license, if you will. So we will, we will hopefully, when an entertainment license comes, comes in, be consistent with what else is going on in the neighborhood, I'll just call it that.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve all alcohol beverage license for MT Group LLC Mad DBA Mad Minnow Bar and Kitchen as proposed.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the application for the liquor license. Any further discussion? Angelo, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Linda?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
Angelo says aye, chairman says aye, it's unanimous vote, thank you. Okay, next, Linda, we have the public hearing on proposed sewer regulations.
Town of Harwich Public Hearing, Proposed Sewer Regulations, March 7th, 2016. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 7th, 2016, no earlier than 6:30 PM, in the Don B. Griffin Room at Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, for the purpose of reviewing proposed sewer regulations. Copies of the draft regulations are available at the Selectmen's Office, 732 Main Street, Harwich, or on the town website, www.harwich-mass.gov. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend the public hearing and provide information and testimony relevant to these proposals.
Okay, thank you. So we will open the public hearing. Michael, are you going to take the lead on this one, or Chris?
I think I'll start, and then Chris, Chris and I met today at 4:30 to go over some new information.
Please.
This is a draft proposal that you all received in your inboxes today, so I'm sure you haven't been through all 59 pages. Like what we were attempting to do was to make the bylaw portion of this into articles, and then the design specs and all the minutia, I guess, into appendices. And now Chris has got an opinion from John Giorgio, so I think.
Thank you, Mike. Just to, let's go to a little bit of-
Can we back up a second and just explain why we're doing this? I mean, you know, it's because we wanted to do a chat, just give some background, please.
Yeah, so these sewer regulations are going to be, we've been asked by Chatham, if we make a deal with Chatham, the IMA goes forward, we'll have to draft sewer regulations consistent with Chatham sewer regulations. So that's, that's how, that's where it came from.
Okay, alright, Chris?
Just to add a little bit of elaboration on that, DEP, when they issue a license for the plant or their operating permit for the plant, they have certain guidelines that they put in. And in this circumstance, if the Town of Harwich adds into that, then we become what's called, I believe it's a coterminous user. So because that plant was designed for certain criteria in the Town of Chatham, then our IMA would have to mean that we would have to mirror the requirements that Chatham has in order to have the East Harwich area plug into that. So you have to have similar standards in which to operate. So as Mike had alluded to, the IMA does specifically call for, or at least the proposals that we've been working with, call for those regulations to be in place. I think one of the questions that really is before, before the board, and maybe not necessarily to be finalized tonight, but under Mass General Law, they have a Chapter 83, Section 10, which basically indicates that a governing body, in this case it would be the Board of Selectmen, can promulgate rules and regulations. And under that, it has a list of the different, or it has different description of the types of rules and regs that you have, again, consistent with what Chatham's doing in this circumstance in terms of similar regulations. Under Chapter 83, Section 10, it just has a requirement that it's a rule or regulation. And under a rule or regulation, the governing body, in this case it would be the Selectmen, can actually publish what they have as their rules and regulations, and then the general public comes in and can weigh in on that, and then the board votes it. So that's a regulation. One of the things that Chatham did, and they're a little unique in the way they did it, they went and they promulgated not rules and regulations, but they took the same, you know, approximately 59 pages of material and made of the bylaw. And by doing a bylaw, anytime that there's a change, you have to go back to town meeting with those changes. I think part of the issue that, in talking to different people, not many, not many other towns do that. Most towns do it by regulation. I was going to say, I think in the, I was thinking about it, in the other towns that I've been in that have had sewer departments, we've always had just regulations, they've never had it as a bylaw. So that's probably three, three or four different communities. And I think part of the reason for that is, there's a Section 12 in here that has an element where a permit is issued to the plant, and there's certain guidelines that they know what the material is coming into the plant. So if there's high levels of copper, for example, the design of the plant is designed to take copper out so it can get down to the levels in which it can go back into the environment safely. If you have it as a bylaw, then one of the elements is when, when a regulator comes in, and I had this where we had a high exceedancy of copper in my last community, they came in and said, "Well, you may have to address the copper standard." You put a copper standard in your, in your bylaw, now you have one time a year where you get to go back and fix it. And I think what was, what was done here, which I think is a very good approach, but the wording needs to be tightened up, is they tried to separate rules and regulations where you have, I think it's the first 18 pages kind of address the overall issues, including that issue of what standard you clean the water to. But then they have the appendix, and the appendix is literally the size of the pipe, the slope of the pipe, the pump stations, it really gets into a lot of minutia. And when you, when you have that issue and you want to change the size of the pipe or the type of pipe that's used, to go to town meeting just seems awfully cumbersome to me. And I think that's why a lot of towns that have these have regulations, so you have the flexibility to change as you go. So what we did, actually Charlene and I met with David Young a couple Fridays ago, I think it was, or last week.
Last week.
And when we met with him, we went over, and what we would propose, we understand, I think, the intent of the subcommittee is to make sure that town meeting has an opportunity to weigh in, what are we doing? So we took a stab, and I think we have it presented at your, at your places this evening, to basically take the first page and a half, which is really the purpose, what are we doing, why are we getting into the wastewater collection system overall, what's the purpose of it? And I think it's safe to have that element be put in front of town meeting as what the, what the bylaw has, why are we doing what we're doing? But then when you get into the ability to start to create rules and regs about the size of the pipe, the type of cleanup element, what chemicals do we have to take out, that's all going to be determined by DEP, you know, quite honestly. So I think those elements should be referred to as rules and regs under statute that allows you to do it. And just to be clear, in terms of for the community, all these regulations would have to be published and acknowledged in the community, so people would have a chance to weigh in. If someone disagrees with a certain element, they could come into the public hearing and say to the board, "We think the pipe should be eight inches instead of six inches," whatever, whatever the case may be. And then that would be something that the board would have to weigh out in terms of whether it makes sense or not. But I think as we head into creating a wastewater collection system and get into the wastewater business in general, I think that the format of having a bylaw that's either a one-page bylaw or a page and a half, or what I think the intent of the subcommittee was, maybe do the first, I think it's the first 11 sections, which is about 18 pages, that kind of get into some of those other areas, but not the minute detail of how the system operates. So one of the things, as we begin to kind of vet through this, I think it makes some sense that the wastewater implementation committee has a meeting, I think next Wednesday night is what we determine. So I think it probably makes some sense for the board to kind of have some discussion on these topics tonight, but to also collect input at that wastewater implementation committee and try to get a sense for what elements need to be adjusted, if any. And quite honestly, what, what are the components do we want to have in the bylaw versus what should be in regulation? And we did, in our discussion today, we will ask, Koltman and Page, they cover probably about 100 towns, so we'll ask them kind of what's the standard practice. What I've been told is Chatham is somewhat unique in that they have everything go to their, into their bylaw. So that's the, I guess, the recommendation that I would make, and certainly this information has been, I think we had it on the website, so if there are specific questions that may want to be addressed, I think it makes-
Okay, we're in a public hearing, it's an open public hearing, so just ask the public if they have any comments or input on this. Anybody read this? Yeah, Lou's reading it now. No, he's... Anne, you're not worried about what size pipe is going into your house? I'm just teasing.
No, but interestingly, this afternoon, I had somebody come and look at the public chamber, and I brought around the subject, just to record that. I mean, a little chat, and I said, "You know, I've heard that someone from Chatham say that Chatham's-"
You could use the mic, that would be helpful, yeah.
Chatham's system actually needs Harwich's stuff.
Stuff, you're right.
In order to operate efficiently. And he said, "That's absolutely true." And this is a person who's been in the electrical end of the septic system business in Chatham for about 40 years.
You know, our last discussion, you know, it's a, I don't know, several hundred, several hundred thousand, or a hundred thousand gallon capacity system, and their only, last I remember hearing is like 140,000 is the peak they're, they're collecting these days. So they definitely need more to prove the concept, particularly with what goes on in Kaukukova as a discharge site, so.
Just one last little humorous comment. So I said, "Well, maybe they should be paying us for our stuff rather than us having to pay them to take it."
We tried that, didn't seem to get much traction, you know, you can just imagine, so. Okay, anybody else, public hearing, anybody else have any input? Alright, I'm going to close the public hearing, hearing none, and I would just remind everybody there'll be more of this discussion in the future. But I would like to get a sense, I think Chris and Mike, what you're saying is in a week or two, you guys are going to sort this out and come back to us as to how you want to format it, is that right?
Yeah, we're waiting for some more input from Bob Dunkinson from Chatham to make sure that this would fit into their IMA, Koltman and Page, to see how-
Intent is to get some segment of a bylaw into this town meeting?
We would hope.
Okay, and what's the deadline for that? Someone remind me?
Well, we have a placeholder in the, in the warrant already.
Yeah.
So the thing would be, we need to, if we're going to publish something that's going to be a bylaw, we'd want to publish, you know, that material. But tonight, we're hoping to finalize the warrant. We still have an opportunity with the special, I mean, if you, if you wanted to make sure that we publish all 18 pages as an example, then maybe we could put that into the special with all 18 pages. If it's one and a half pages, that may be something that we can just distribute fairly easily.
Okay, Linda?
So, just so I'm, I'm clear, the, the three proposals or three ways we could go with this are Pages 1 and 2 as the bylaw.
Correct.
Pages 1 and 2 through 18 as a bylaw, and Pages 1 through 59 as the bylaw. I just want to make sure I understand what, what is this being talked about?
Anything in between.
Anything, well, I only, I can only handle three.
Yeah, 2 and 3 more likely.
2 and 3 more likely.
Yeah, not, you know, 1 being these first two pages, but we don't want to use all 59 pages as a bylaw.
No.
I think that would be a mistake, quite frankly, based on the Chatham experience and just common sense, I think, you know, so.
Okay. So we're really looking at 2 and 3, and more than likely 2, because putting, I agree, the, putting the specs of the size of the pipe in a bylaw is going to be cumbersome when they no longer make six-inch pipes, they only make eight-inch pipes, and we have to go back and change a bylaw for the eight-inch pipes. That does seem to me to make sense to put those into the regs as opposed to the bylaw.
Sure. You know, I would encourage you to get this done as soon as you can, just so there's enough time. Yes, ma'am?
I think this was all the website.
Could you, could you speak up to the mic, please? I know we're going to make you get up, it's, we're going to make you get up, it's tough. Angelo wants to be able to hear you, and where are you Angelo, in, where are you, Hawaii?
Hilton Head.
Oh, please.
Where are you?
Hilton Head.
Are you in Hilton Head?
Yes, I am.
Okay, he's in Hilton Head. He can hear you all the way from there.
Okay. The question is, you did say these are online, and if they are, where? Are they on the wastewater? They on the Selectmen's site?
Actually, right now, I'm just looking at it now, it's on the Selectmen's site. So if you go to the Selectmen's meeting agenda tonight, all 59 pages are there if you want to read them.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, anybody else on this topic? Okay, you guys know what you need to get done, right? So we look forward to getting your feedback and seeing a new document, I guess, the way I would describe it.
And the next meeting of the Wastewater Implementation Committee is-
16th.
16th.
7:00 PM, right.
I ask for clarification from the chair on that. As soon as I know, you'll all know.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to old business, Route 28, West Harwich Road Improvements. Linda, I think you had some questions from the other night on the-
I did, I did. And it's, uh, we had a little presentation, and this is specifically on the reworking of the street and putting in, and going after tip money and bike path, you know, bike lanes and et cetera, et cetera. And the, I think we all recall how much time and effort and money was spent on the Route 124 plans to be then terminated at the end of all that effort. And, and I, I think that something that I'm hoping this board will support as a direction to the town administrator is, I think it would be a really good idea for us to put those little stakes in the ground now so that people understand that the stake is coming on the other side of their azalea bush, the other side of their, or it isn't. I think that as a town, we should have learned some, you know, we, while we had many, many meetings on Route 124, and it was in the newspaper and plans were there, it wasn't until the very end that all of a sudden it became apparent that there were some issues with the neighborhood and the plan. So I would like to propose that we, like sooner rather than later, like within the next month or two, take the little stakes, stick them in the ground as to how far out we think, and I understand it's all town right-of-way, and people may have their azalea bushes on town right-of-way, et cetera, et cetera. But I think if we don't get that out now, we're going to spend again a lot of time and effort and money, and if we end up at the same place, that will be, I think, not a good idea. So I'd, I'd like to see that done. I think it would make a lot of sense, because I have, I'm visually, I'm not really good as to when somebody says, "Well, it's six feet to the north and it's 12 feet to the west." I can't even visualize that because I can't figure out which is north and south, but particularly on the Cape as to which way is west. I think it would be a really good idea to have that so people can see where those lines are. And I know there's, I just think that that would be, and I hope that the board will support that direction, to have that done.
Don't know yet, but we'll have a discussion here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, I don't think that's a bad suggestion at all. Where we are, though, is my understanding on 124, we were already into, into design elements.
Oh, we were, yes.
So we were, we were well down the road. Here on, on the project on 28, the only thing the board's authorized is about $8,000 to be spent with VHB to do some design concepts. We did walk the, the street with the neighbor, that sounds bad, walk the streets with the neighbors, but we did walk and did a, you know, pretty good survey of kind of looking and seeing. I think really the question for- I think really the question for the board is, once those design concepts come in, and we're gonna try to have that meeting sooner than later, and then bring the design concepts, so the public has a sense for what's gonna happen. Show them the designs, as I think last, last meeting, I kind of alluded to what those designs would look like. Show people what we're roughly talking about, and then we can maybe do some of the stakes, and let people have a sense for where's the right-of-way. But I think the idea is by working in concert with the neighbors, to actually present a plan to the board, that not just is gonna be supported by administration and put forth by administration, but something hopefully that the neighbors have say in, and to help to design that. But I think ultimately, it's gonna be up to this board, we are gonna ask for state money, and it will be up to the board to decide that if this all makes sense, the next step in the process would be to decide, yes, the feasibility looks good, let's pursue state funding, and the state funding could take three, four, five years. So, I mean, it's a long process, but if no one likes the eight thousand dollars that's been spent, if no one likes the plans now, then let's, let's cut the cord before we get too far down the road. So, we are looking at bringing those plans back to the, for the first time, the feasibility, and having an engineer go through and present them, in lieu of myself, and to have the community get an understanding for what we're looking at as a concept.
Okay, Lynn, could I ask you, I'm putting you on the spot, I don't know the answer, maybe you don't either. Does this section of twenty-eight, excuse me, Lou, I need to get link to the microphone, please. Does this section of twenty-eight follow the right-of-way, as opposed to when we're dealing with one-twenty-four, you know, sometimes on the left side of the, left side of the right-of-way, sometimes on the right, that type of thing? Do you know? Does it go right down the middle? Probably not.
No, it never goes right down the middle.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I like to point out a couple things. One, Route twenty-eight is a state-owned road, okay? Town of Dennis is, they've had a project in the planning stages about fifteen years or so, and I believe it's on the tip for funding next year. So, they are gonna be making some major improvements to Route twenty-eight, Dennisport, for, I think, about a mile out of Dennisport, heading west, okay? Kind of the impetus of this, or the thought was, the administrator says, "Are there any roads that would meet this? Could we get going?" I said, "Well, if we don't want to look, I mean, it's gonna be a demarcation line, if Dennis does their project and we don't, you're gonna go from all beautiful tree-lined kind of boulevard, Dennisport, into Howard, which needs a facelift desperately." We are putting, in my opinion, I think Linda's suggestion has merit, but we don't even have any idea what it's gonna look like right now. What we've done is a very conceptual plan of what the state typically accepts, what the right-of-way consists of, walked it with a pretty large group, I think there was probably thirty, forty people that day that walked the group, and then subsequently had a follow-up meeting, and then tried to incorporate some of those suggestions into plan. I just got off the phone with VHB tonight to see if they had an opportunity to talk to District Five, MassDOT, to see, to just float preliminarily whether they had any interest in this. And their response was, "Yes, you need to go meet with the bike ped people in Boston." Because right off the bat, the walk and some of the feedback we got was, they didn't like, you know, the standard features that are incorporated into the complete streets concepts. So, as a starting point, I think we're gonna have a meeting with staff and VHB, and give some direction on how to approach Boston with that, and then come back to this board with VHB doing a formal presentation.
Is Dennis looking at the complete street concept?
They're done, they're at a hundred percent.
That's what I mean, are they, is it-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did, they've done some unique things, like in the downtown, where they had parking on both sides of the street, I believe it's only narrowed down to one side now. VHB, when they came in and did the presentation here, touted the Dennis plans, which they are the designer on the Dennis plans. So, we are, like Mr. Clark said, I mean, we're a long, long ways off from doing this. I have my own kind of reluctance, shall we say, and not over the one-twenty-four, but over the fact that this is a state road. And I think the state for, states should be fixing their own roads, but they would never come along and do a project of the scope and magnitude we're talking about, which is fixing a lot of ills, as they are in Dennis, on their, on a maintenance contract. So, this is above and beyond what a maintenance contract would be with MassDOT.
Okay, but as it gets further, I think the point is well taken, Linda, that...
I was just waking Angelo up.
Are you waking Angelo, waking him up?
He was nodding off.
Oh, okay. You should see what's going on up here, it's crazy. No, I'm sorry. I think the point's well taken, that, you know, on this one, as we know more, the visual, you know, what the impact is on individual, you know, locations and whatnot, it'd be worthwhile to stake it out, but, you know, I agree, we're a long way from that. Linda?
And the reason I'm bringing this up is, a few years ago, on coming out of Harwichport, the sidewalks were all redone by the state, and I live right on Route twenty-eight, so we ended up with this nice granite curbstone and a nice sidewalk, and by the time everything gets up to, it has to be so many inches here, and so many inches here, and so many inches here, I have a foot drop to my front yard. So, consequently, we had to take up our front walk, because I was kind of a little nervous that somebody would decide to come to the front door and take a header off this one-foot drop, and therefore, we have now no front walk, because we thought that that was the safest thing to do. It's the unintended consequences, when things are put on pieces of paper, and all the nice little colored things look really nice, but then when you actually say, "And this is where we're going to extend on," that's the part that I want to make sure that we get that, that real visual, not the visual on a piece of paper, but the visual on the ground, so people really do understand that so much of their property is right-of-way.
Like, would you expect any elevation, serious elevation changes out there?
There's not much up there, my knowledge.
It's a different road, and it's pretty flat.
We're stopping before the Herring River.
Yeah, it's pretty flat.
I, Linda brings up an excellent point, to get that-
Two in one night?
What was the other excellent point? Wait a minute, what was the first one?
Stakes in the ground.
Well, we didn't say it was excellent, we said it was okay, so...
I'm excited here.
Calm down.
To comments well above my pay grade. When we got the state to reconstruct the sidewalks in Howardport, a condition of that was that we took over future maintenance of those sidewalks, i.e. clearing it for snow and ice, and any future reconstruction, it might have to pay. I am guessing that if we deviate anything from the standard build, the state is going to require the board to do the same, meaning that they're gonna want the town to take over ownership, to speak, of those sidewalks in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Good, okay.
Lou, before you get there, did you have any other comments?
No, that was just, that was the issue.
Okay.
Thank you, Peter, just one comment. The residents in that area have been working very closely since the inception, with both the town administrator, who's been just fabulous in this respect, and with the highway department. We've had an input each and every step of the way, and we see this road and the changes as a positive versus taking something away. So, we're really into a different game, rather than perhaps how one-twenty-four worked. There's still a wish list, the residents have a huge wish list of what they would like, but they're also very reasonable in understanding that we're not gonna get everything that is on the wish list. You know, a bike path, we discussed, since there's going to be sidewalks on both sides of the street, can we have a dual use? And that was one of the discussions. So, there's middle grounds for all this, and it's working. So, to date, we've been working very well, we have no issues at all from residents' perspective. We do ask that we are going to have, we've collected the money for the students coming here this summer to do a competition, and one of the things that they'll also be doing is looking at the road and what could be done to dress it up. We ask that the state at least be shown that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else on this topic? Okay, we'll move on to new business. We have gift of land to the town to use for conservation purposes, excuse me, purposes under the custody of the Conservation Commission. My neighbor James is here. How are you, sir?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. I don't get to see you on my streets, I have to come to this meeting and see you.
Actually, these are in the package.
I think we have them in the package already.
You have them? Okay, all right.
Amy, do you want to sit up here as well? Good? Sure.
She's upside down in the package.
Depends on how you sit. What's that?
I was trying to get out of that.
You're trying to get out of it?
You know me.
Yeah, you're trying to get out of it, okay, well, here you are, so, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Jamie Norcross, I represent Peter Donovan, who was under agreement to buy property located between Sisson Road and Forest Street. Peter had hoped to be here as well, but he's actually on the Airport Commission in Chatham, lucky him, and they meet at the same time, so, he's not here.
Can you move that mic over to you a little bit?
Sure.
Yeah, we-
They've received, or Peter's received approval from Conservation Commission, Board of Health, and the Planning Board for a nine-lot subdivision, which is on the handout that you see in front of you, only seven of the lots are buildable. Lot eight, which is at the bottom, which I circled in color, is the lot that my client proposes to donate to the town for conservation purposes, under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. It's a large lot, over four acres, it's largely, mostly wetland, as you can see from the plan on the south, it currently borders conservation property owned by the Compact of Cape Cod and the Harwich Conservation Trust, and then you can't see it on the plan, but I'm sure you know, across, to the east from this lot, across Forest Street is a large swath of conservation property owned by the town, so it seems to fit in with a lot of other uses in the area. My client has also been in front of the Conservation Commission and the Real Estate and Open Space Committee, and I'm sure Amy can talk about the Conservation Commission piece, but both boards have voted to approve or recommend that the selectmen adopt, accept the donation of this parcel. I know it's a little preliminary, as we still have to get a finalized agreement with the town, and also, we need to have a finalized CER to go along with the property, but that's really the project, and happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay. Amy, do you have any input from the Conservation? I'm pretty sure you guys are on board with it, and-
We are, we had a discussion probably about a month ago, at a Conservation Commission meeting, and due to its proximity of land and water, across the street to the east, with the grassy pond system, even though there's a road in between that, the commission did view that positively for connectivity, both of, for the preservation of groundwater, as well as for habitat protection. In that particular section, the upper reaches, we do have some invasive plants, but surprisingly, we actually have a lot of very good natives, and the plant community there is fairly pristine, actually, so we're excited about acquiring this. We don't seem, it doesn't appear that there would be any more maintenance on behalf of the town for this particular area, it doesn't butt up right to the cul-de-sac of Chloe's Path. That was one of my concerns personally, as well as my commission, is sometimes when you have open space, that comes right at the end of a cul-de-sac, it tends to be an area where people might be bringing some of their lawn clippings and things like that, but it doesn't come right up to the end of Chloe's Path, and we would still, it does a butt for a street, but that comes with all the maintenance issues and trash pickup that we may have to already currently do, so we didn't see this as being an additional, additional piece of property that we were gonna have to put a lot more time into monitoring.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just, we do have an opinion from Town Council, I'll just read it. Town Council was asked, you know, can the Board of Selectmen accept this gift? And the answer is, as long as land will be acquired by gift for conservation purposes under the custody of the Conservation Commission, no town meeting vote is required, but the Board of Selectmen will have to approve the acquisition pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section eight C. Okay, so the question, I guess I would have is, is this ready to be, you know, accepted as a gift, or do we need to wait until some other documentation is put together? Chris?
Yeah, I guess my suggestion would be two things. One, if the board likes the concept of this, that it vote the concept, and then what we'll do is, we'll direct the town attorney to put together and work with, work with the, with you, to put together the necessary deed documents, to make sure that we can record it appropriately, and then we can bring back that draft deed for the board to sign. So, I would do tonight, the intent to proceed, and then have the town attorney put together the necessary documentation.
Sure, okay. Want you to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we, in concept, accept the gift of land, Lot eight, and put it under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission.
Second. Okay, moved in second, in concept, to accept the, accept the gift. Angelo, did you hear all that?
Yes, I did, I think it's a fine idea.
Okay, good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put that to a roll call vote, Linda?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
Aye for the chair, so you can have him as vote, thank you, we'll look forward to the documents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I was just kidding about getting out of things.
Oh, I know.
'Cause I never get out of anything.
We'll get even with you, don't worry.
I'm sticking around for a little bit.
Okay, next, we have a Chapter ninety request, Queen Anne Road Drainage Replacement. Link?
Hi, good evening. Under normal circumstances, Chapter ninety request would be under the consent agenda. However, this is an unusual request for a number of reasons. The actual request is in the amount of five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, and that is to replace-
And eight cents, by the way. And eight cents.
I don't have that in front of me, so I can't verify that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That is to replace all of the drainage on Queen Anne Road, actually from Main Street all the way to the Rotary, excluding that one part where we border Chatham. The reason we are advocating for doing the drainage at this juncture is National Grid has a seven-mile main project that you may be aware of, that they're actually holding in a butt of hearing as we speak over at the Community Center now, on, that's coming. It's probably gonna have shovels in the ground in a year to a year and a half, and this is their preferred route, is Queen Anne Road. As is our normal practice, we typically, when we overlay a road, we take care of all the ills, all the drainage ills, anything that the road needs, we take, we try to do a hundred percent complete project. If we were doing this, we'd be putting about, probably a third of our paving dollars in the ground. We are advocating to doing this now, because National Grid is gonna be held to a curb-to-curb overlay on anything they dig up. Mr. Nickerson and I have had a couple meetings with them to date on this, and it's never been a sticking point, and I think if we're gonna do this project right, we should probably get out ahead of them and put the drainage in. Lastly, they aren't proposing to start until fall of 2017, and yet I'm here a year and a half beforehand, because our drainage contract with the Robert Hour that expires this June thirtieth is, will be three years old. We anticipate a significant cost increase, since they've held the cost for three years, coming forward. That's the main reason we're here now, rather than probably in the fall. I think we typically like to put a structures in and leave them half a season, or even a full season, before we overlay a road. And I have Mr. Nickerson here, who's dying to get up at the mic and talk to you.
And like, this is, this is the part of the gas main project that they're replacing because of the corrosion, if you will, is that right?
They, from the newspaper articles I have read, they sustained some significant fines for having higher pressure in their mains than they were allowed to. This is to, when they say replacement, they're not pulling anything out of the ground, folks, this is in addition to their current infrastructure. And they have a preferred route, so the Siting Board basically gets to tell us where they're gonna go. I have, I fought the, this particular route, I went to the commission in Boston and testified, and it had no effect whatsoever on the route. We would prefer to see a small deviation, but with a curb-to-curb overlay, we're gonna end up with a brand-new, a brand-new road in the end, and this is to put the drainage in, so we don't have any puddles.
Understand, okay. Questions from the board? Anybody have any questions out there? I have a motion to approve the request.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the Chapter ninety request, the Queen Anne Road Drainage Replacement.
Second. Okay, moved in second to approve the Chapter ninety request for Queen Anne Road Drainage Replacement, the amount of five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-nine-twenty-six and eight cents. Angelo, did you hear all that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so I will put it to a vote. Linda?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
Chair is aye, and him as vote, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Budget Amendment Number One. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it was a couple Saturdays ago, we had a budget session, and we, as a result of that, we took a secondary look going over the various budget items. And the way I've done it, in the time that I've been here, is to, anytime we make significant adjustments to the budget, we kind of record those changes, and I do them in the form of just Budget Amendment. So, after the, the meeting on that Saturday, we went through, I might run through these just to kind of, there's not that many of them. We did look, there were several items that we had funded out of the Reserve Fund for this year, thank you to the Finance Committee. These were items that became more critical, and they were left in the operating budget, so obviously, we don't have to fund them twice. So, we had, on the Police Department, pistols and software that we did. Also, there was a twelve thousand for a new server, as we've kind of alluded to, we've had some real server issues on our email network, so we have that reduced down. That's twelve thousand. We also did look, in the process, the Shellfish Lab had been estimated to be renovated at twenty thousand dollars. There is grant monies that are available to do that work, so that work is gonna be done out of a grant that's available to us now, so that was not necessary. It also came up, a couple items came up, as was alluded to earlier, about the LED fixtures. We believe that we can drop that budget by twenty thousand dollars on the streetlights due to the, the savings from the LEDs. And then, the other, there was an issue had come up about the, kind of, how we're gonna do the tax assessment and the apportionment for the, the solar facility on our landfill, former landfill. What we did find is, we were carrying a number in the budget for that tax. What, what we did, from a finance standpoint, is we put in the new growth number on property tax for the value of the, the new asset, and then, we had that offset by the amount of what the tax bill actually would be. When we did that, we were estimating, and now that they've gone through, the assessing department went through, they, they did get the total value of that facility. That actually resulted in a twenty-seven thousand dollar savings to us. So, we had all those decreases total up to about ninety-one thousand dollars. We did do a few adjustments on some of the, the various union contracts that we didn't catch as we were going through the budget. That's about three hundred dollars, fairly minor. The Board seemed to be, seemed to have a real interest in funding the part-time conservation agent, so we did put that in the budget at twenty-four thousand dollars. The adult daycare was something that the Board also expressed a real interest in. We had estimated that cost to be about seventy-five hundred. We did get a, a more refined estimate from the folks over in Orleans, said it was actually ninety-five hundred, so we added two thousand to that. And then, there was some concern about using, as, as I had concerns, about using a lot of the free cash for dredging. So, we did take some of the taxation money that was saved in this, and we put that towards dredging funds. So, the dredging funds will be included in the operating budget of sixty-five thousand, and then, the balance, I think that's eighty-five thousand, would stay in the, in the free cash. So, we're starting to make that transition on the dredging funds from the free cash proposed to the operating budget. So, the total of those items total up to ninety-one thousand. So, we were able to, to balance that off, and as we continue on the budget process, I think you'll continue to see the smaller adjustments will be made as we, as we move forward.
Okay, and I just wanted to clarify. Angelo, you sent me an email before the meeting on some of your positions, and what I read on the Budget Amendment, you, if I could summarize this, you had a concern that, that this is actually a reduction in dredging funds of sixty-five thousand. The way Chris has this laid out, it's actually an addition of dredging funds?
No.
Just to clarify, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for dredging. We were taking
the full hundred and fifty thousand out of free cash. Under this proposal, we're doing sixty-five thousand out of taxation, and then eighty-five thousand out of free cash.
Okay.
So, the number stays the same. The funding source becomes two instead of one.
Okay. Angelo?
Peter, I think the approach that Chris is taking is excellent. I'm glad it's coming out of the tax money rather than free cash. I just didn't know what the total was.
Okay, so, so you're good?
I'm good. I think it's a good, I think it's better than it was.
Okay, all right. Other discussion? Michael? Did you have a question on Community Center or something with the...
Yeah, there was a, just, just a couple of questions here and there. Carolyn's not here. I think that we had talked about, or at the budget hearings, I think that we heard, Peter, Michael, I think you heard this as well, Angelo, that she had miscalculated her salary line, and I don't remember, I think it was either was part, I think it was the part-timers as opposed to the full-time positions, but that it was twenty-five hundred dollars incorrect, and that she was hoping that that would get corrected in the budget amendments. I think we remember that, and I don't see that in here.
Yeah, just on that, we did get a note today from Carolyn, and what she had relayed was that she has an employee that's in the steps, and she had it from step three to step three, so there was no increase where it should have been step three to step four. The part I'm not sure about, and we'll have to double-check, is I thought that we flagged that at our level when we had a meeting with her, and we adjusted it. So, we'll, we'll double-check, and if we are off, and, and that money is needed, then we'll add that to Budget Amendment Number Two.
And I, and I think my only other question is, I just, I just wanna make sure that I'm really clear. There's three hundred thousand dollars in the budget for solar revenues. Is that net of the forty-three percent that is being allocated over to, of the total that is being allocated over to the Water Enterprise Fund? I just wanna make sure that it's three hundred thousand, but it really somewhere else, which I haven't been able to find, there is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars expense sitting somewhere. Is that the net number of that forty-three percent going over to the Water Enterprise Fund?
I know you want me to say yes or no, and unfortunately...
I do, I do.
Unfortunately, I just can't. When SEVAC came in, they indicated that the amount of revenue that we would be receiving is in the neighborhood of four hundred and fifty thousand, higher than we had anticipated. We were also making the assumption that the amount that the Water Department was using as part of the net metering would be in the neighborhood of twenty-five percent.
Yes.
Because it actually came in at forty-three percent, it's higher than we had anticipated. So, what I've asked Andy to do, and I did do that in the email form, is to have him relook at the numbers and see, if it is four hundred and fifty, what does the forty-three percent do? So, that three hundred thousand may be a little bit shy of what we had projected, because that was a number we used early in the process when we were assuming the four fifty and assuming the twenty-five percent utilization.
But the intent is that that three hundred, if, say the three hundred is right...
Would be the net number.
That that is the net number.
Correct. That's the intent.
So, there may be a Budget Amendment Number Two to fool around with this a little bit. Maybe, maybe not, but, but the intent is that the three hundred thousand in the budget for our revenue is net of the allocation to the Water Enterprise Fund?
Correct.
Cool.
Is, Chris, on that topic, is someone looking at the year-to-year comparisons on how much energy we're generating at the facility? In other words, just got through February of this year, how does February of this year, kilowatt-hour wise, look compared to February of last year, which last year seemed like a bumper year for us, and, you know, as far as generating energy, if you will. And it's all about what the energy is. So, I don't know. Is someone looking at that year-over-year?
I believe he gets the information on a monthly basis for what the energy, you know, that's generated out of the facility is. So, we have that data. We can get that data for you.
Okay, I'd suggest we put that in the agenda sometime, just to take a look at it, to see if we're the same as last year, you know, down by two percent, you know, it's more cloudy, it's raining, whatever.
And on a related, on that twenty-seven thousand dollar credit, Chris, to the SEVAC Solar, the original amount in the budget was ninety-two thousand in property tax. Do we allocate, now there's sixty-five thousand, do we allocate forty-three percent of that to the Water Commissioners? Do they pay expenses?
No. What we did on that is, it was a decision that was made, again, we made a lot of these decisions early before this process really got going, before we received any checks. And what the Finance Team did, this is probably two years ago, is we said that because the lease agreement is related to the facility, and the facility has on the lease agreement that the element of the lease says that the town will reimburse the operator for the property tax related to it, that what we did was, we intentionally, because we knew this was gonna happen anyway, under new growth, we added that ninety-two thousand in new growth, and we knew that the tax bill would be, we thought the tax bill at the time would be close to ninety-two thousand. Until we got a full accounting as to everything that went in there, the tax bill actually came out closer to that sixty-five thousand. So, this was more, we generated the revenue that we had anticipated we would generate to offset the cost of the tax bill, but we did that all as part of the lease. And the other arrangement is all part of the power purchase agreements.
Maybe we get the Water Department to be benevolent and make a donation to us.
We might need to. I don't know. If, does, does that come out, would that sixty-five thousand come out of our net of three hundred thousand?
No, totally separate.
Totally separate. Totally separate. Okay.
Okay, anything else on that? Could we give a motion to accept Budget Amendment Number One?
Make a motion that we accept Budget Amendment Number One, as presented.
Second.
Moved in second to accept or adopt or approve, I guess, Budget Amendment Number, Number One. Discussion? All right, here, and then we'll put it to a vote. Linda?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
Chair is aye. It's a vote. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to a review of annual town meeting. Warren Arkells, still at number fifty-seven. Is this the only one left, by the way?
Yes.
Yes. We haven't done something with to include. It's Pet Cemetery time. How are you, Robin?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm just wonderful.
I just wanna give everyone a little bit of background of the pet cemetery. Well, this year, while I was attending my management seminar in December, it came to my attention that there had been a bill filed in Massachusetts from pet owners wanting to be buried in their lots. So, if they currently own a lot in our town, this bill would allow those pets to be buried in their lots. Our rules and regulations for the Town of Howard strictly forbid this, so I wanted to come up with an alternative for these pets. And the American Pet Products Association estimates that pet owners will spend sixty billion dollars this year on services alone. Let's face it, most people love their pets more than they love their family members. And they are looking for a place to memorialize...
Speak for yourself. Speak for yourself.
And they're looking for a place to memorialize their pets, and we're hoping to create such a place here in Howard. Well, trying to fill the need in our town and look for a spot that they, we could find for a pet cemetery, I met with Paula Champagne, our health agent, and tried to find a suitable area for the pet cemetery. After weeks of meeting with Paula and Amy from Conservation, we came up with a proposed parcel at two seventy-six Queen Anne Road. This is directly across from our DPW barn. It is a parcel that was transferred to the town for municipal use, so we thought, thought that this was a great fit for us. We looked at different options of what our cemetery would look like, and we settled on Hills Memorial Gardens in Florida. It is a park-like cemetery. It has a gazebo in the center, all flat memorials, has walking paths, flat memorial scattering gardens, and it's pet-friendly. So, not only will pets be able to be interred there, but you'll be able to walk your pets there as well. Article fifty-nine is, we're looking to transfer the property now from the Board of Selectmen to the Cemetery Commission for future development of a pet cemetery and possibly a crematory, and hopefully a crematory at some point. But at this time, we're just looking to do the cemetery.
And would you explain what a crematory consists of for pets, just so people don't think we're having something the size of a railroad car that, that things are happening in?
So, a pet crematory is kinda like a, wouldn't even be as big as this room. Okay, it would have a little office in it, and it, the...
Now, we're more interested in the area of activity, let's put it that way.
Oh, the area of activity, that it would, would be inside that parcel, that two-acre parcel. So, it would just be in the corner.
No, no, what I mean is, the thing that Fido goes into?
The, the... The oven is about as, it's not even as big as that desk.
This desk?
Yeah. So, it's not even as long. Maybe there's just that one segment there, but it, you know, it goes, it's about, I think it's six and a half feet maybe tall.
Okay, is there any environmental issues with running something like that?
There, the regulations that are put out by that, they have to adhere to all sorts of specifications. I didn't bring that with me. But I know that when the Town of Plymouth put in there, they had somebody come in to speak to the, at their town meeting, to tell them about all the concerns. But they did, the guy that I talked to, Ed Hildebrandt, who runs the pet crematory in Plymouth, told me that the admissions that come out of a tort is, in one week, gives less than what a Burger King or McDonald's would give out in a day. So, I, the admissions are very minimal. They have to adhere to all sorts of special regulations.
Okay, and again, a little bit morbid, I guess, but I had to ask, does this run on natural gas?
It can run...
There is a moratorium on natural gas. I'm just, I'm just...
It can run on either gas or propane.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is there an expense, if you start with propane, to switch back to natural gas?
I'm, I have not got those figures yet.
I guess I'm asking, you know, there's a moratorium on new gas services. I think this is on morbid here, but is the reality that, you know, this is approved, and it goes to town meeting and is approved, that it can't really start up until, do you have gas service? I mean...
That could be correct.
Which could be two thousand and nineteen or something like that. I mean...
Right. But we're not asking to build the crematory this year.
No, I understand. No, I understand. You're just asking for the land to be set aside for it.
Right.
And would you also, you and I, you and I, I think have had this discussion, but just for the general public, as far as whether or not this is competing with anybody doing a private service or, you know, that kind of thing?
I, I don't think it is. I know that you had mentioned that somebody who is a veterinarian might have one of these in their facility. They probably just offer that. They're not advertising that they actually do it. And I think that most people who have, my pets that were cremated all went to Angel View in Middleborough. I talked to Linda, her pet went to Plymouth. I, I really don't think it would affect it at all.
Okay, and the...
Yeah. Most people go to Angel View. They're probably the number one.
And the typical customers, clients, I guess, I don't know how else to say, this would be dogs and cats, I'm guessing?
That is correct. But it would be small. We wouldn't be doing large animals, no.
No horses or elephants or...
No.
Okay, all right. All right, questions from the Board? Linda?
Once you get, if this passes a town meeting, what kind of expenses are, or what do you plan on having to do to that piece of land, the two acres, to actually...
Oh, Link, I was like, thank God you stayed. A link.
What would actually have to be done to that land to make it appropriate to start using it as a pet cemetery, et cetera? I understand you're not asking for the money to build a crematorium at this point, but to use it as a pet cemetery, what do you think is gonna have to be done?
Okay, when we...
How is it gonna be funded?
Well, we did the Evergreen expansion. I don't know if any of the Board members remember that. We didn't go for any money from the town for that. What we did was link, we tagged the trees, Link had his guys go in, they cleared the property, we graded it down. We went out to bid, and we put down the top soil, and then, we had it hydroceded. We did all those expenses through my revolving account. So, we didn't come back to the town for any money for that. And that was seven acres. This is just two and a, you know, two acres roughly.
So, you'd expect to do the same thing?
Exactly the same thing.
Any other questions? Angelo, do you have a question on this?
I thought I read that the, the plan was to have the funds that come in from the burials go into the general fund. Would it be possible to keep it in the cemetery funds for, to use in the future?
Okay, did everybody hear his question?
That, I think, there's two separate issues. If we're doing for the cemetery lot sales and burials, that would be a separate cemetery account. Can't be commingled with the human cemetery stuff. It's a total separate entity. If we actually do a crematory, it is mandated that those funds all will go into the general fund. So, typically, Ducksbury made a net profit, I think it was over seven hundred thousand dollars a share from their crematory, went right into the general fund. And I think Plymouth made like two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand went into their general fund. So, those cremat... So those cremation funds would go directly into the general fund, I think that's, was, I think it's by the law, Mass. law, maybe.
Okay, Robin, would you anticipate needing additional staff to, you know, to run this?
The Plymouth crematory right now has one cremation full-time specialist and one When we opened it, they were, a guy that comes down and, and brings us the equipment, will train five employees on how to do cremations, and certify them before he leaves. So we probably won't at first, because we won't be doing that many cremations at first, and I am more than willing to learn how to use the equipment at first. But if it starts to grow, yes, we probably would. And Plymouth hired an additional part-time employee, so both their full-time employee and their part-time employee, all their salaries, I think, total, I think I gave you the information, eighty thousand dollars, and they still made a profit of over two hundred and something thousand dollars.
Do you have any idea how many pets' remains could be buried at that site?
I know that the one in Plymouth is three and a half acres, and he's already buried over two thousand pets at his, and he's not even a third, and he started in nineteen seventy-six, I believe. So he said that our two-acre parcel would be, a lot of people have their pets cremated, and then they scatter them there, there'll be scattering gardens, so they won't actually be purchasing burial lots, they'll just be scattering, and other people don't have them cremated, and they're the ones who do end up purchasing lots, or if they purchase a cremation lot, it'll be smaller.
Okay, all right, on this one, I, you know, if we decide to go forward, this, I would, following on your discussion on the road, if you will, I would at least put a little sign on that lot, so people know what lot we're talking about for a town meeting.
Sure.
As opposed to having a guest at so many feet away from the highway garage or whatever, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Okay.
But I wouldn't put pictures of, you know-
Muffy.
Muffy and Fluffy and whatever, that kind of thing, so. Thank you, any other questions? Ann?
Could I just ask for a definition, because it came up in regards to the First Congregational Church, you know, way back in the nineteen eighties or something, the term scattering garden? I can't imagine, you know, just kind of taking ashes and just throwing it on the ground, what, could you give, define scattering garden for me?
All right, so typically, a scattering garden has a vegetation that grows up, so when you put the ashes in it, they actually sink in between, it'll be like a thick ground cover, it's, it's not grass, so it's going to either be flowers, or it can be different, there's probably about twenty different species that difference people have for scattering gardens, but it's pretty high vegetation.
And it's not blowing in the wind?
No.
Okay, just checking.
No, no, no.
Okay, anything else on this one? So we need to decide whether we're including this in the warrant or not, it's your preference.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we include Article fifty-seven, transfer parcel of land to the Cemetery Department to develop as a pet cemetery and crematory.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded to include Article fifty-seven, which is the transfer of land for the pet cemetery and pet crematory, into the warrant. Discussion? I will put it to a vote. Linda?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
Is that begrudgingly aye, or is that a good aye?
No, that's a party aye.
Okay, just checking, all right, chair is aye, seniority vote, thank you, it's in the warrant. So we now have everything in the warrant now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We hope.
I do want to, I know it's in the next one, but we did send the entire warrant to the town attorney, John Giorgio, and I got an email this afternoon that they have gone through it, he has additional changes, and he anticipates not having a final, final version until tomorrow afternoon. So I guess I would ask to hold off tonight on voting the warrant, because there's still, it's still going to have revisions to it.
Okay, so we're on E, so that's okay, that's-
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump the gun.
No, it's just fine, no, we're, we're moved on to the town meeting warrants, so, so wait for town council input. When does the warrant actually get printed? Do we know?
Beginning of April.
Yeah, beginning of April, I think she has to have it there and to the printer.
So I think the, I think the finance committee-
When do we have to-
Aren't you having a meeting on Thursday or something?
They do have a meeting on Thursday. I could bring, I could bring the final, well, the final draft at that meeting.
Please bring it to them.
Linda?
When do we actually have to vote on the warrant? I don't have the timeline in front of me.
Technically today.
Okay.
To vote to send it to the finance committee.
So-
We vote the warrant, subject to-
The town attorney's comments.
Any changes town council has that aren't, that don't affect the intent of the warrant, something like that.
Are we, has Article twenty-two, the rehabilitate the Lothrop Avenue water storage tank, has that been changed to replace?
Yes.
I know we talked about that, because in this warrant, in our packet, it doesn't-
It's still not changed?
No, it still says rehabilitate, and I know we went through that, that it's, it's not a rehab, it's a replace.
Yeah, I know we, I know we had a discussion.
Would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I will move to send the annual town meeting warrant to the finance committee, and with, subject to some modest revisions coming from our town council, and rehabilitate changing to replace.
On the water tank?
On the water tank.
Article twenty-two.
Okay, you're second?
Second.
Okay, moving seconded to send the warrant on to the finance committee with those clarifications. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Linda?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
Chair is an aye, okay, we got a vote, thank you. Okay, submission of special town meeting articles, this is new business item F. Chris, you have anything on that?
Yeah, just in terms of looking at the calendar, we did have a discussion with staff, and under the, I may just read this, just the suggested timeline, so the town meeting is scheduled to be held on May second, the special town meeting will be held on Tuesday, May third, which is kind of the practice. All special town meeting, all special town meeting articles must be received no later than forty days prior to the special, which is March twenty-third this year. So the proposed date to open the special town meeting would be Monday, March fourteenth, and then the proposed date to open the special town meeting would be Tuesday, March fifteenth at eight-thirty, with a proposed close date of Friday, March eighteenth at noon. So basically, next week, from Tuesday to Friday, would be the period of time that if there are special town meeting articles that need to be in there. Proposed date to sign the special town meeting warrant would be Monday, March twenty-first, proposed date to sign the ballot would also be Monday, March twenty-first.
Okay, so the way I read the, the agenda we have, is submission of special town meeting articles, discussion, possible vote to open, although this says, the proposed date to vote to open the special town meeting is next Monday, we could vote to open it on these dates today.
Mm-hmm.
And I would recommend we do that, just in the interest of getting the word out that there will be a special town meeting, and people can submit articles, so.
Okay.
Anybody's interested in making a motion to that effect, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we open the special town meeting warrant as of Monday, March fourteenth, and close-
No, no, no.
Sorry, what?
Tuesday, March fifteenth.
Tuesday, March, Tuesday, March fifteenth at eight-thirty in the morning, and we will close at Friday, March eighteenth at noon.
You're second?
Second.
Okay, let's just be clear, it's moving seconded to open the special town meeting warrant on Tuesday, March fifteenth at eight-thirty AM, and close that special town meeting warrant, submission of our articles, if you will, on Friday, March eighteenth at noon. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
Just, Mr. Chairman, looking at that, it has proposed date to sign the ballot on the twenty-first, too. I think, just where I'm clear, I want to make sure I'm clear, my understanding as to where we kind of are under the, what the board has done, the ballot would have four questions on it at this point, the middle school question that the board has discussed, and then for funding purposes, the Sacro Tugat Harbor project roadway, roadway money of seven hundred thousand, and then the IMA with Chatham. At least for draft purposes, I'll have the town attorney draft with those four articles, I don't know if there's any other ones that the board-
Okay, let me take, excuse me, let me take care of the special town meeting warrant first, and then we'll get to that. Okay, we have a motion on the table, and that is to open the special town meeting warrant on Tuesday, March fifteenth at eight-thirty AM, and close the special town meeting warrant at noon on Friday, March eighteenth, okay? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Linda?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
Chair is aye, okay, so we have the special town meeting dates that will be opened and closed. Now, Chris, as regards the ballot, why don't you continue that discussion, please?
Yeah, just thinking about it, that only gives us two weeks, really, to, to get the, the proposed date to sign the ballot, so I think what I'll do is, in the morning, get ahold of Attorney Giorgio, and, I mean, he knows, he's reviewing the warrant, so there are the three items that are built into the warrant, that they are contingent upon dead exclusion votes, and then he obviously has been working with us on the, the middle school, so he's familiar with the middle school. I just, I think that's what the ballot, the draft ballot, would look like, I don't know if there's anything else that the, the board, you know, has, or if there's any thoughts, not necessarily for tonight, but at least for next week.
Well, my suggestion is for next Monday, we put the, the middle school question, I think we need to just have it one more time in front of us, I'm guessing, right?
Sure.
Just to make sure everything is clear, and, you know, the last time we looked at it, weren't there some language changes that were going to be made?
Right, some language changes, those were made and they were sent to town council, who made just minor, minor.
Okay, but I think we should see those back here, we'll put it on the agenda, just so everybody's clear as to what it is, before we say, okay, that's what we're going to go vote, or go put on the-
So we'll get a draft to the board.
Yep, okay, any else on that? Okay, so now we're down to G, wastewater governance model, is this yours?
Sure. A few weeks ago, we brought some changes, proposed changes for the CWMP, the, one of them was the, the governance structure, we've, we've heard from a lot of people on the governance structure, Peter reworded this, it says, "The Harwich Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan identifies several phases of wastewater infrastructure implementation throughout the town spanning a forty-year timeframe. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will oversee and manage the design and construction of each phase of wastewater program. As, as individual segments of the wastewater infrastructure are completed," sorry, computer hiccup, "infrastructure are completed and activated, the operation and maintenance of the physical wastewater infrastructure will be turned over to the Harwich Board of Water Commissioners. For instance, in the East Harwich and Pleasant Bay area, the Board of Selectmen will manage all aspects of the wastewater system until such time as the initiation of flow to the Chatham Treatment Facility. At that time, the Board of Water Commissioners will assume responsibility for the operation and maintenance of this segment of the Harwich wastewater system." So that would be, you know, my, my recommendation to the board, anyway, for governance.
Okay, and just to be, just to be clear, this goes, you know, assuming we adopt this, it goes where? It goes to the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan?
Yes, it would actually go to, through Chris, to John Giorgio first, for language and, and legal, and then it would go to David Young and be put into the CWMP.
And it is one of the last, if not the last, step in getting that document prepared to go through the regulatory-
I believe it is the last.
Yeah, okay, okay. Do you have any input from the water commissioners? Gary?
Glad I stopped by tonight. Good evening, Gary Carroll, Water Commissioner, Howard. I agree with what Michael's proposing, I mean, we did take a position as far as absorbing the wastewater department, once the infrastructure was created and it starts to flow, so I think we're all on board, as the, the commissioners on, on that part of it, so I think it's a good idea, and I think we're in favor of that, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anybody else on this one?
Quick question, so that therefore we'll have some kind of town meeting article to change the name of the enterprise fund to Water and Wastewater, or something like that?
You mean at some point in time?
Yes, at some point in time.
Could be.
Yes, I would say.
Sometime in the future, but-
Not, not this year.
But not this year, no.
Angelo, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think at one time, we thought about having, starting with two separate enterprises funds, one for-
Say that again, you had a delay in your statement.
Sorry, a while back, we said we'd start with two enterprise funds, one for water and one for wastewater, and then combine them afterwards. No?
I think, yes, once we start collecting money, prior to flow going to Chatham, we would start a separate enterprise fund, so that it was only used for wastewater.
We are quite a ways away from that.
Quite a ways away from that.
I know, but it's not just one way.
Understand, okay, any else on that topic, somebody want to make a motion that we send this along?
Michael?
Michael, there you go.
I move we approve the concept of the Harwich wastewater governance as read.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded to approve the, the concept of Harwich wastewater governance as read, discussion, hearing none, we'll put it to a vote, we'll start here with Michael.
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Chair is aye, thank you, seniority vote. Okay, next, moving on to administrator's report, Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just have a, a couple things this evening. One of the things that I wanted to at least chat about is that, there's a lot of things that go on kind of behind the scenes in administration, and one of the things that we, we look at and have to put together is on OPEB. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, that has a fairly significant liability to it, just looking at some of the numbers, in the neighborhood of seventy to eighty million dollars is what the, the numbers were back a few years ago. And one of the things that we look at is how do we come up with different funding plans to try to fund that liability? So we have, at least administratively, we have a funding plan in which the last two years, or I guess the three years worth of budgets, we have put in a hundred thousand dollars into the OPEB fund. We did also, I think last year at town meeting, created a OPEB trust fund. What those actions have done is they, they create where we now have a discount rate of up to five-point-seven-five percent return on the money that we have, as well as obviously having the, the funding mechanism. And by doing that, our liability has been reduced down to about, just under forty-three million dollars. So we have the ability- A huge number. They are, yeah, I mean, but to go from eighty to forty is a, a step in the right direction. And one of the things, we just met, I think it was last week, we met with the folks from the Plymouth County Trust Fund, that they've established several communities, and they only focus on Plymouth County, and, and obviously Barnstable County, and they're having people go in and pool their money together and invest it. They also have selected a firm that meets the different requirements to comply with the OPEB, the GASB rules that are in the accounting world, and what we have the chance to do, and this isn't something that really requires board action, it's more the treasurer, although I think, as I think of it, they, they did ask for the board, so we will bring something back to the board. If we have the, our funds that we've started to collect, and we're probably in a neighborhood about, well, if we do the three hundred thousand this year, well, we should be in the neighborhood of almost just shy of, I think it's just shy of a million dollars. So we've made a pretty good effort to try to build up those funds, and by pooling those and having them actively managed by a firm that specializes in OPEB, our discounted rate, the, the amount of return on those dollars, would go potentially from five-seventy-five to, to seven and a half, and that would reduce the liability from forty-three million down to thirty-four million. So there are ways in which administration has been working to reduce the liability, and it is significant, and in one of the communities I worked, my boss had always said, you know, every dollar that you have to raise, whether it's for debt service, or whether it's for liabilities such as these, are a taxpayer dollar. And, you know, as much as we can try to actively manage and reduce those liabilities unto the town, it's really critical to, to be able to do that. So we will have a, a presentation, we have the, I think we're in the process of getting the materials from the, the Plymouth County folks, and we will bring that to the board. But just to show that, you know, there is a lot of active management that goes on, on things that, you know, I, I know I, I've used the word OPEB plenty of times here, but I don't think we've ever- we've ever really talked about the full extent and scope of what that liability is, and I think the community should have a, feel somewhat secure in that by actively managing it, we are trying to reduce those liabilities and create a stronger position for the town moving forward.
So, Chris, could you just give us a couple seconds on who's in, you know, who's in this pool? For instance, we have retirees from the town of Harwich, right?
Yeah, under-
Before, excuse me, before we formed, before we formed the Monomoy Regional School District, you know, those employees were all town employees, right? And I don't know how that, you know, what's the hangover from having, you know, the old school district, if you will, and what did Monomoy, you know, absorb going forward? In other words, they must have their own set of OPEB requirements, if you will.
Yes.
So what's actually in here? Who are the folks that are in here?
Yeah, that's a great point. Generally, for teachers' retirement, most of the workforce in a school system are part of the mass retirement system, so they don't have that liability, but what we had before would be the paraprofessionals, some of the kitchen workers, the custodians, people that wouldn't traditionally meet that. That liability has been moved from the town, that's probably part of that, going from eighty thousand down to the forty-three million, too. Part of it is that liability shifts from our books onto Monomoy's books.
Okay, so I'm being a little facetious, but if someone had fifteen years in the school system, working in the cafeteria, for instance, and then they shift over to Monomoy, Monomoy is fully responsible for those OPEBs, or are we responsible for the first fifteen years credit, you know, whatever that amounts to?
Yeah, that's a good question. I know, I'm not sure on the OPEB, I know on the pension, what they do is they actually prorate it, so if you were part of Harwich's liability, then Harwich would pay that. So let's say someone had twenty-five years' experience, so fifteen was related to Harwich, and then the ten would be related to Monomoy.
Right.
So that liability would fall that same way, that they would have to pay.
As proportional, or?
And I know that happens in pension, I'm not so sure about that in OPEB, I would imagine they would follow that logic, but I'm not a hundred percent.
Okay, and the other question I would have is getting to the increased discount rate?
Yes.
Is there an additional risk associated with that?
Actually, the nice thing about this plan is, usually when you have plans, you know, you have to enter, stay for three years, this is, you can go in, and if you don't, you know, get the returns you're looking for, you can get out any time. So he has designed it as a strictly voluntary, the real value for us is that, once they have, and I think I have it in the report, once they have ten million dollars, you know, under active management, then the fees start to go down. So by pooling, we, you know, it would take a long time for us to get to ten million dollars, as an example, but by pooling, we get there quicker to get the savings. That's a real significant-
Have any other towns on the case jumped into this, do you know?
Yeah, actually, I think we have a list-
List here.
Chairless?
Cape Cod, Regional Technical, Dennis, Yarmouth, Monomoy, Cape Cod, Catuah, Wareham, as Barnstable.
Oh, there we go.
Wareham.
And they're only, they've only been around since January one of fifteen, I think, if I remember right, so a fairly new organization, too, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Then the other one, I just, I think it came up on the free cash policy, and I think we did put it into the packet, basically what the free cash policy has, and this is a board policy that's been adopted, I don't remember the, I'm sure it has a date on it.
Two thousand six.
Two thousand six, so it's something that's been in place for a while. What the free cash policy is designed to do is, because budgeting, you have to have your budget done, basically before your fiscal year ever starts, so there's quite a bit of projection and estimating that goes into the design of that, and one way to try to insulate yourself or protect yourself as a municipal financial entity is to make sure that you basically underestimate your, some of your local receipts. So in this policy, it says that we should underestimate by a margin of ten to fifteen percent between estimated and actual local receipts when developing revenue plans. I did take a look and see, when you compare our estimates in the FY seventeen budget to the actuals for FY fifteen, we're actually at about three percent, which is, which is pretty low. I think I had said on Saturday during that budget session that I thought we were, you know, lower than we should be, we were outside of the target. I think that, you know, normally that would be an item of really significant concern. We do have a few revenue, a few revenue items that have come in pretty, pretty well, and I think that, you know, when you take into account and you say, okay, well, where are we coming in for this year, and how are those numbers, and are those numbers solid, and will those numbers hold, that I think we're, we probably will edge up a little bit closer to that, you know, probably eight to ten percent range. But I at least wanted to comment a little bit about where we are, and just, you know, this wasn't a policy that, you know, that was made up by administration, this is a policy that the town adopted. These numbers are not that inconsistent with what the rating agencies look for, so it's fairly consistent with good municipal finance practices.
Okay, Chris, excuse me, this reminds me that we're still looking for, looking for a presentation, I guess from Andy, on where we are on receipts this year versus where we thought would be, and what the projections are to get us through the year because of the hiccup, if you will, when we got to certification of free cash, and I'll also describe that, but we just want to make sure that that's not going to be an issue getting through the rest of the year, I guess the intent, okay?
And then I just had, I think I only have one additional, and then I have a couple items that I'd like to have Charlene go. We actually got a phone call into the office today, we had passed, the town had passed special legislation last year at town meeting to address the issue of cleaning up some language over at the library, striking out the word professional that was included in the charter. We were pretty good about following up when we had the one the year before, so we did check today, and it has made it through the House, so they did the third and final reading on February fourth, it's making its way through the Senate, the Senate has done the first reading, and the second and third, which is, the second's been ordered, the second's been read, and the third is coming up, and that was as of February twenty-fifth. So hopefully that will be on the governor's desk, hopefully in the next thirty to forty-five days, and that one will be done, and we'll have that material, we have to have it signed by the governor, obviously, before it becomes operative. But just to give a update, I know that was one, and if anyone has an interest, it was under House Bill Number thirty-seven oh eight, so that's all online, so if people do want to track and monitor, they're more than welcome to do so.
Just to let everyone know that there is a survey on the town website, the Harwich Hazard Plan Public Survey, the town, working with the Cape Cod Commission and some other partners, are looking to, working to update the town hazard mitigation plan, so this plan will identify and assess the community's hazard, natural hazard risks, and determine how best to minimize and manage those risks. So we do need people to go on and do this survey, the information you provide us will help us to prepare as comprehensive and well-written plan as we possibly can. The second thing is, we've been talking in the last few weeks about a wastewater summit, the date and time has been set for that, each of you received a copy, a draft copy of the letter that will be going out to the participants. We are looking at Thursday, April seventh, at six p.m. to eight p.m. at the community center. There is a draft letter here, which, if is okay with the chair, if he would like to sign, along with the chair of the Water Implementation Committee, we will get this out, we are inviting the Board of Selectmen, the wastewater implementation committee, Finance Committee, Capital Outlay Committee, Board of Health, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Water Commissioners, Chamber of Commerce, and the Monomoy School District Committee, along with, we plan on inviting Lincoln Hooper, who just left, as well as Sarah Peak.
And who's going to organize the presentation? What's the?
This is going to be a collaborative, Brian Dudley, who's from the Department of Environmental Protection, I don't know if any of you know Brian, he is well-spoken, very smart, and a good meeting facilitator. Patty Daly will also be presenting some information from the Cape Cod Commission, David Young will be there from CDM, and Chris will also be participating. We will also be breaking out afterwards into strategy sessions with different groups, which will be pre-planned, so we don't get all the planning boards sitting together, all the FinComs sitting together, it's all going to be separated. So it looks to be a very good opportunity to learn more about wastewater, what our obligations are, and those kind of things, and it, they did a similar summit in Dennis last fall, and it was very successful, it was very well-received, I think they had forty-six participants in the session, and the results were very good, and a lot of people really benefited from the information that was shared at that meeting.
Okay.
So you will be getting in, via email, your actual invitations, and we do need folks to RSVP, so we will be kind of on people about that.
Okay, Linda?
Is the public being invited to this?
They can watch.
So they can come?
They can come.
But these are the participants?
These are the participants, so they can sit and listen, and at some point, the facilitator will open it up to outside comments, but wants to be sure that the participants get the first.
Okay.
I think the Dennis model, what they tried to do is almost like train the trainer, I think it's very common for people in the general public to come up, and if someone's on a finance committee, or somebody's on a selectmen or conservation, that they think that they know a lot about all different town elements, so I think that if we're able to kind of train, we are also, I think, going to have, we're trying to have this televised, so hopefully we can get somebody, so that way the presentations will be able to be aired, so people will have an opportunity. This is really kind of beginning of education, not the end of the education.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Okay, maybe Angelo will be back by then, right?
I certainly will.
Okay, just checking. Anything else?
All set, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll go to Selectmen's report, I'm sorry?
Just as an aside, for people who are watching this tomorrow, the, what did you call it, the hazard survey you're doing is also on social media somewhere, because I filled it out this weekend, I don't remember if I got it through Twitter or Facebook, but for people that are interested in finding it, it's out there somewhere, too, because I filled it out already.
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, it has been disseminated through the water department, through the highway department, I mean, it's out there. The fire department put it on the Facebook page with a link, so, yeah, there's been a lot of publicity about this.
So it is an official survey if they see it?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a link on the website, if you go, the very first announcement, when you go to the homepage on the town website, says Harwich Hazard Mitigation Plan, I actually printed it, and that's what you go to when you click on the link, and then there's a further link to participate in the survey.
Okay, Michael, do you have any? Linda? Angelo, do you have any Selectmen's report, other than the weather's fine down there?
The weather is fine, but I'd like to thank you for getting this set up, because I think it's-
I had nothing to do with it. It was here, Foster.
He didn't stop it.
Foster did, Foster did, it seemed to work okay, didn't it?
Yeah, it works fine.
It worked okay for me, you guys could hear him, right? So it seemed to work okay. So, okay, thank you, I have one item, and that is requests for public record information. I'm just curious, we had this latest one, Chris, somebody looking for legal something or other that came in. My question is, you know, I'm assuming that somehow we record those and track them, and try and identify how much time and effort it takes to respond to them.
Yeah, actually, if I remember the one, because I think I CC'd you on the response to her, hopefully I did.
Yep.
What would she actually, and this happens a lot, people put in requests, and they don't really know exactly what they're looking for, so you try to ask for clarification, so I actually did, I've been trying to work in Munis a little bit better, our accounting software, so I was able to print off a couple reports and send it to her, so I turned it around basically the same day, so there was no ten-day wait or anything like that, and she seemed somewhat appreciative of that effort, so she was going to look over the material that was distributed to her, and if she had any additional information that she wanted, she'd be back, but that request has been satisfied, you know, when it came in.
My concern is, excuse me, my concern is that sometimes these things can eat you up as far as time, I mean, you know, staff, whatever, trying to respond to one of these things, that's all.
Yeah, one of the things, too, just as an opportunity, a lot of people, and I think she did it, they send in the request, and it says that the town has to comply within ten days. That's not the way the intent of the law is. If there's a request that is substantial, then you have to, you have to respond, you know, in a timely fashion, no later than ten days, with how much the estimated cost would be, and the time and research into getting the information. So sometimes people put in, they automatically assume, like in this one, you know, ten days, we were able to turn it around, it wasn't that complex of an issue, so we were able to get it back to her, but if that was, where she wanted every single invoice for the last five years, we don't have them all electronically, so physically some would have to be sent to go track them down. In that circumstance, we just have to say how much we anticipate the cost to be, and approximate the amount of time.
And, excuse me, they also, they also sent this to a wide variety of towns, if you will, or people.
Yeah, I guess-
And I do know Coleman and Page actually weighed in on this, so.
Yeah, I guess sometimes the local press, not local, but some of the papers, will test towns to see how responsive we are to the public records law, so I think in the time I've been here, I've, probably once every six months, we get a request like that.
Okay, Linda?
For those of us who don't know what the request is, what was the request for?
I think the full request was for all legal-related documents over the last five years.
And bills.
And then the bills as well, so fairly lengthy, and what Munis has is, every bill that we pay, that just has the invoice amount and the firm, and I, in this case, told her what firm goes with what kind of litigation.
So, oh, wow. So has the person come back and asked for, like, actual invoices or things like that? Because that would be a bear.
Not yet, not so far.
You know, it kind of came out as hello to a whole bunch of people, and doing some public records gathering, have attached my request below, if I sent this to the wrong administrator, I appreciate if you would forward it along to the person who handles the issue request in your respective town, and one came to me, for instance, so obviously I wasn't going to do much with it, but, you know, and it does get down to invoices, that type of thing, so, I mean, you know, these things can take a lot of time, I mean, you know, you-
Sure can.
And if I might, they're actually changing the law.
Yes.
That it's going to make it-
Worse.
Worse, tighter.
More difficult, let's put it that way.
More cumbersome.
Yeah. No, it's a-
And we also won't be able to charge them, I think, for the first, like, two hours or something, so, yeah.
I just want to make sure, if we ever get in a situation where we get twenty of these things going on at once, that at least we know that, you know, there's a huge amount of resource being put in to try and deal with it, you know, because otherwise, we don't know.
Well, under the new proposed law, it has to be catalogued, and it's, yeah.
Okay, anything else? We are adjourned, thank you. Thank you, Angelo.